Sidoos, gangkulu nasidus mase. Nifinatun midzu pauguna ogan para estiine kungu ki publico. Ti me gagai teriota pauguna ogan lo mangai giwinina iprinuponisia, i bill number 368, 372, 373, 399, janii 406. Guahas yaman man ogang paugu gi gankosinyata na ngamnayon siha. Lo guahasta mangai giwinida man distulukui porumba presentai testigonia. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for joining us for this public hearing this morning. On the matters of bill number 368, 372, 373, 399, 340, I mean, and 406, there's been requests by some of the individuals who wish to testify on the bills that they will be appearing a little bit later this morning. But we do have some items on the agenda in which we have individuals that are here and ready to present their public testimony. And for that reason, we'll go ahead and convene this and change the order of the agenda to accommodate those that wish to to join us a little later on and then those that are here so we can get them going and present their testimony. Before we begin, I'd like to thank and welcome, first of all, wish everybody a happy new year and thank you very much for joining us. I'd like to recognize and thank members of my legislature and my colleagues who are here with us this morning. We have Senator Eileen Yamashita, who is here first, joining us this morning as she always does. We thank her for that. Of course, the other faithful attendees at this hearing is Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz and Senator Tony Ada. We thank them very much for their interest and time to hear the public testimony on the matters before the committee this morning. For that reason, we'll go ahead then and start and begin with bill number 406 since I understand that both DPW and the Attorney General, I'm assuming maybe providing some testimony on this? No? Okay, great. All right, great. We have signed up with us Mr. Carl Dominguez from the Department of Public Works. We have Young Yu, is it Jack, from Hanjin. If you wish to testify, please join us. Ruseida Zala? Oh, okay. You're with him? Okay, and then we have Assistant Attorney General, Mr. Phil Taidinko. So we'll go ahead and begin by requesting Mr. Dominguez, who first signed up. Okay. Thank you very much. Bill number 406, by the way, we did present and sent out letters of invitation soliciting comments from the different departments and agencies on this bill that's being proposed this morning. The Governor and Lieutenant Governor's Office, the Attorney General's Office, Bureau of Budget Management Research, Revenue and Taxation, DOA, DPW, the Department Chamber of Commerce, and of course, Hanjin, were also notified of the hearing this morning. And we thank those that are represented here this morning for their presence. We'll go ahead and... The bill was introduced by Senator and Chairman of Committee on Rules, Senator Rory Rispecho. He has a statement on his intent behind the bill and I would like to take the opportunity to read it into the record before we receive, begin receiving public testimony. Dear Senator Pangolin and half a day, thank you for scheduling bill 406 for a public hearing. Thank you very, very much. Thank you, Senator Pangolin. It's called the chairman's, it's called the chairman's editorial license. I introduce bill 406-31, an act to repeal and reenact section 21 of chapter 12 of Public Law 3177 relative to providing for assignability of offsets against business privileged taxes for the outstanding debt balance owed for the completion of the Guam Public Market Redevelopment Project Phase Two, Department of Commerce Project Number 320-5-1008-L-AGN, including change order number one and change order number two, to provide options for the government of Guam to satisfy a seventeen-year-old debt. Guam Public Market Redevelopment Project Phase Two, Department of Commerce, was completed in 1995. The vendor has given the government of Guam sixteen years to make good on its obligation, going so far as waiving the interest payments over the last decade and a half. Heading into the seventeenth year, however, the vendor has decided to make claim for the full payment they are owed. If enacted, bill 406 will allow the vendor to either offset the balance owed them against their business privileged taxes, which would be assignable or claim a promissory note that would also be transferable and would not be subject to the current processing timelines for the Department of Administration as prescribed in current statute. This would allow the vendor to finally begin recouping their monies in a way that will not place undue hardship on already stretched government coffers. Thank you again for your, for this opportunity. I respect, respectfully request that this statement be included with your committee's report on bill 406. Thank you again very much. Very truly, your Senator Rory Richard Rispecho. We'll go ahead then and begin with the Attorney General and then we'll proceed down the way.
Buenas, good morning, Senator Pangolin and Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, Senators Yamashita and Senator Ada. Phil Taidinko, Chief Deputy Agent, behalf of Attorney General, Leonardo Rapada, in the office of the Attorney General. Thank you for the opportunity to provide some input or testimony on bill 406-31. If I could just real quickly read sort of the, get over the, sort of, some technical logistical issue problems we think this bill contains and then I'll move to a, sort of, a conceptual problem area about the bill. And this bill intends to permit offsets and it also, although it applies to single contractors, it allows the offsets to be assigned and this may make the administration and collection of taxes difficult for revenue and taxation to track how those offsets are applied and how it remains. Additionally, the law doesn't provide any structure for how the offset will be transferred if this were to become law. Secondly, since the bill potentially reduces the amount of GRT, it also may violate potential bond financing agreements, but I don't know that this amount is even close to that. This was from our tax, our Assistant Attorney General, who's assigned over revenue and tax, provided that input. I, only just this morning, because I received a call from DPW and then I just got civil to pull the file and I'm just reading it on the run. But for point of information, it's my understanding from a quick read of the file that there was a claim filed by Hanjin back in ninety-nine and it was found that monies were owed and there was some discussion that the settlement would be that they would pay it out. Okay, and this all occurred within the six months of the Claims Act. In any event, our read of the Claims Act at the time was that, you know, if you're not satisfied, you're not getting what you're supposed to do, then you would file to go to court to enforce what you believe are your claim rights under that. Well, we believe that they sat on their hands and didn't take us to court and so the statute of limitations applied. Now, it's my understanding, again, I'm just learning this on the fly, trying to figure out what is the background for this sort of private bill. It's what I would call it, a private bill, before a particular vendor. Is, my understanding is that DPW, again, please, I can't be quoted that, I know the facts that well, but apparently recently DPW, under at least former Director Larry Perez revived or acknowledged that, yeah, you know, we never did get around to paying that off even though it's now two thousand whatever, but it was well after the statute limitation passed. At least that's our review of it. And so it was never clear how the claim was revived that the statute of limitations have passed. Because our response was the statute of limitations applied because this was deemed denied if it was not satisfied administratively on the Claims Act and then thereafter they had, they had a time, a period for which to file a lawsuit to enforce this. And that didn't happen, is my understanding. And so we're not dealing with a little mom and pop or Don Maria or Tun Jose. We're dealing with a global construction company that has the ability to enforce their rights. Because I gotta tell you, we use the Claims Act and we apply strictly with big and low. And when we tell folks, especially the small guy, "I'm sorry, you know, you missed your deadline, the statute and all that", or, you know, "This is what the law says, you gotta go enforce it in court", and they never got around to enforcing it to court, we tell them they're out of luck. But if we go this way, this means that the legislature is creating a exception to the Claims Act and then maybe we should refer folks down for private bills if they want to revive their claims if the statute of limitation applies. And so I think that's something that should be factored into the consideration for passing this bill. I'm not saying you're not authorized to do it. I'm simply saying it impacts the Claims Act if we're supposed to enforce it that way. And again, I may not be saying this if this was, you know, I'd be probably more sympathetic if it was a smaller fellow that's asking for this private bill, but we're not. We're dealing with a large corporation that has a wherewithal to that. So I just want to provide that input for your consideration in terms of whether you want to pass this bill. And then there's this interest issue too, that we haven't even legally wrapped our minds around that too, so we wanted to be able, if necessary, provide some input on whether that should be paid out too or authorized. I understand your ability to pay out or authorize appropriation or rather, I'm sorry, the tax credits, offsets, but it's something to factor in. Maybe, you know, that perhaps the mom and pop folks can ask for business privileged taxes too, I guess. So that's something to factor in, in your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Attorney General. Carl?
Good morning and happy new to you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. I'm Carl Dominguez, the Deputy Director at Department of Public Works. I'm representing Director Joanne Brown, who's off island this week on official business. The Director and I learned of this claim sometime last year. We're aware that, that in the Budget Act 3177, it does state that, that the amount of the claim, not including the interest, but just the claim itself, was to be taken out of our base operational appropriation. And the Director and I just want to plead with the legislature that we, we just, we can't afford to do it. Our budget is seventeen and a half million dollars this year. It was twenty-two million last year. And we are struggling with our budget as it is. So essentially, that's my testimony this morning is that we simply can't afford to take it out of our operational budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dominguez. Mr. Jack?
Good morning, dear Honorable Chairman Saint Pangolin and Honorable members of the committee. Thank you for bringing bill number 406-31 for a public hearing and thank you for this opportunity to provide our testimony in support of this measure. We would also like to thank Senator Rory Rispecho for the introduction of bill number 406-31. An act to repeal and reenact section 21 of chapter seven of Public Law 3177 relative to providing for assignability of offset against business privileged taxes for the outstanding debt balance owed for the completion of the Guam Public Market Redevelopment Project Phase Two, Department of Commerce Project Number 320-51008-L-AGN, including change order number one and change order number two. The Guam Public Market Redevelopment Project was successfully completed on August fourteenth, nineteen ninety-five and invoiced shortly thereafter. In the beginning of nineteen ninety-seven, after numerous collection efforts, the then Department of Commerce requested the Department of Public Works to release the final payment to our company. Nevertheless, the balance on the project remains unpaid to date. It is our understanding that the delayed payment was due to the transfer of funds out of the project account in nineteen ninety-six. For the past sixteen years, the Department of Public Works has continuously stated that it has been operating with an insufficient budget and has yet to locate a funding source for this debt. We then filed a government claim on June nine, two thousand. We received a notice from the Attorney General's Office who upheld our claim indicating that this is a valid debt of the government of Guam. We have exercised great patience in consideration of the financial constraints of the government of Guam. However, we appear sixty years is far beyond our reasonable timeframe. We have exhausted the best amount of collection efforts of the past seventy years with the most recent attempt being on November seventeenth, two thousand eleven, proposal to reduce, interest reduce, interest dues in exchange for immediate payment of the principal amount. Again, however, this remains unanswered. We strongly believe with bill 406-31, we can finally bring closer to this issue without the need for immediate cash, which seems to remain the primary reason for the extremely delayed payment. Respectfully, Yonghyun Jung, General Counsel.
Thank you very much, Sidoos Masi, Mr. Jack. Senator Cruz, did you, Mr. Vice Speaker? Senator Tyrone, welcome and thank you for joining us. Senator Yamashita, did you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Speaker Ben. Well, now I see that Attorney General Taidinko's looking at the information that was presented by these fine people and I'm wondering, Phil, if this addresses some of the issues that you were raising earlier about going through the Claims Court and our whole government procedures or processes. I know you just got it, so maybe, yeah, so...
At the very least, I think I took sort of a neutral position here that, that I just wanted to point out for information's sake that there are a set of procedures and that, in fact, I disagree with the gentleman that he, they made all the collection efforts because I don't see any court case filed here. So I don't buy that. Of course, that's coming from a lawyer. I mean, unless you can show me the lawsuit, then I would say you made every collection effort. But from a lawyer's perspective, you haven't made every collection effort. So, but I haven't had a chance to prove to see whether there's been a lawsuit filed in here and I inquired at the office whether one was...
I don't believe an actual case was ever filed with the Superior Court of Guam for connection purposes.
Oh, okay. So, I mean, that's sort of my quick down and dirty response without going through all of this and looking, in all fairness to them, looking at whether... Again, I'm not commenting on the equity of whether, you know, when something's owed, something's owed issue, but we do have statute of limitations and they should mean something. So, and it's something to factor in your consideration for whether you want to pass the bill or not. I'm not saying don't pass the bill, I'm just saying, consider the impact, ramifications, impact and implication on the Claims Act and also with how we deal with and crush the hopes of some of the smaller folks when we tell them the law says this. So, you know, I just want folks to factor that in and they'll make their decision. But I'll, if I can get a copy of this...
Yes, sure.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker Ben.
Thank you very much. Senator Ada? Senator Tyrone? Yes, Senator Cruz. With that last comment, Phil, I would hope that the Attorney General's Office will submit written comments subsequent, okay?
We just didn't really pay attention to this bill until DPW brought it to our attention that there was an impact and then that's when I called for the file this morning. So I'm doing this all on the fly and so in all fairness to Hanjin, I did qualify my statements that they're being done on the fly.
Thank you, Senator. Phil, I just have one question. What about, is there any role that plays in the fact that when they did file the claim and then after that, they've continued to pursue and they've been promised, "Don't worry", maybe that's what kept them from going to court. "Don't worry, we're gonna pay you". And relying on the government's assurances that a court case may never have been filed because of those assurances that they received from government officials, should that weigh anything at all with regards to the statute of limitations?
You know, generally speaking, statute of limitations are strictly applied unless they have, unless there's some other principle of law that allows an exception for the equity of the situation or the tolling. Usually what we call equitable tolling. You know, I'm not being paid by them, but that's, if I was their lawyer, that might be one of the defenses I would be arguing if I decide to file a lawsuit, that it was equitably told by virtue of the conduct of the government. But I'm not their lawyer and they're global and they can afford the attorneys to make those kinds of arguments. But if I was in private practice, I wouldn't have... My advice, when I, and I've been in private practice and I have had big clients and I would have said, "Hey, okay, well, it's, we're getting near the date, let's just file to preserve your right".
Okay, thank you very much. And we certainly will request that some kind of public statement and written be submitted to the committee to supplement the oral testimony this morning.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Sidoos Masi. The public hearing on bill 406 will have, this receipt of testimony will be concluded. The record will remain open for any other individuals who may wish to submit comments on this bill until such time that we file the committee report. Thank you and Sidoos Masi. The next bill on the agenda that we have, the Speaker, who is the author of 372 and 273, requested, she's held up just short in a short meeting, so I know the individuals are here, but we'd like to proceed, so maybe we'll go with one more bill and then hopefully she'll be able to join us. So the next bill we'll have on the agenda for the hearing then will be on bill number 368. We have individuals here ready to present testimony, which is an act to add a new section 3123 to Article One and to add a new 3436 and 3437 to Article Four of Chapter Three of Title Two, Guam Code Annotated, relative to intoxication of persons under the age of twenty-one. We have Mr. Phil Taidinko, who also signed up to testify. Is, are you testifying? Okay, why don't you go ahead and come forward? And before we begin receiving the public testimony this morning, I'd like to give the opportunity, of course, to the author of the legislation to present his synopsis of the bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Last year, our colleagues passed legislation increasing the drinking age to twenty-one and I was very happy with the support that I received. It was unanimous support by our colleagues in the last legislature to increase the drinking age. This year, my concern is, is that they're still providing alcohol to minors under the age of twenty-one. And this was really brought home graphically and tragically a year ago April, two years ago April, I guess it is now coming, when six young people were in an automobile and crashed into a telephone pole on the, across from Kinda Club at the Pacific, on the backside of the island. Tragically, we lost one life. Another young woman was severely injured and I know that because almost a year later, I ran into her mother at the lobby of St. Luke's. They were still getting treatment. But the worst part, Mr. Chairman, is that the young man that was driving is now faced with the possibility of at least twenty-five years in prison. He was sixteen at the time the accident occurred. The adults that purchased and provided the alcohol to all six of the minors that were in the car are out there. They're free. They're, they're almost without any responsibility for what happened. I mean, or seemingly. What I'm trying to do with this bill is to have social responsibility for drinking. That I think adults that are as insensitive, I won't use any other word, insensitive is probably the word best I could come up with, are irresponsible, irresponsible to provide minors with alcohol. Should be held responsible for that very irresponsible act. They should be civilly responsible for the damages and the injuries that occur in civil court. They should probably, they should also be criminally liable for their action. This incident was also again brought to light when the young people from the public high schools came and testified. I mean, came together in our legislative hall to do close-up. And when they presented their recommendations for legislation, the first thing they came up with was the issue of underage drinking and holding people responsible because they saw that six, the lives of six very bright young people has been irreparably damaged, if not destroyed. I know these six young individuals went to, if I'm not mistaken, a private school and it just, they were all very bright students, had a lot of promise ahead of them and are now, one's going to spend most of his, his young adult life in jail as a result. One family has lost a child and several other families are having to suffer with the trauma that their children experience. And so I think it's high time that we as a community hold these irresponsible individuals who provide alcohol to underage individuals responsible for their action and make them civilly and criminally liable for that irresponsible act. And I want to thank you for conducting this hearing as expeditiously as you have. And I look forward to the testimony we'll be receiving this morning.
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Vice Speaker. We'll go ahead then and proceed with receiving the public testimony. Mr. Attorney General?
Good morning again, Senator Pangolin, Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, Senators Lamela Silva, Tyrone, Senator Yamashita, Senator Tony Ada. Phil Taidinko, Chief Deputy Agent, behalf of Attorney General, Leonardo Rapada, in the office of Attorney General. We support the intent of the bill, which is also another statute to safeguard our young people and also safeguard our streets, especially in the context of Vice Speaker's rendition of one of the cases that has motivated him to introduce this bill and that is an ongoing case still with our office. So we support the intent of this bill. But I do want to just sort of raise for discussion some things for the legislature to consider, the committee to consider. I noticed that this is placed in Title XI, so I assume that this is concerning premises or businesses, like for example, in the first page on line thirteen, owns, occupies or controls business or commercial premises. Are we... Are we, is that the intent here for, or is any premises?
Any premises.
Okay, any premises.
Including, I, I know.
Residential?
The part is, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to know whether that was.
But they should be responsible enough to know what's happening in their homes and in their apartment buildings. But I would appreciate it if other individuals wanted to know.
Right. The other issue I wanted to point out is I know that, and going to the second page, lines of Form 5, the consequences for violating the statute if you sell alcohol to folks under or you know of, and your premises, that people under 21 are consuming alcohol on your home or your premises or your business, that you have a criminal sanction there and I was wondering if we could sort of separate that out, only because the statute looks more like a civil liability statute to me and so, because there's sort of a built-in defense who reasonably could have prohibited or prevented. I'm like, I'm putting my criminal trial.
No, I see that, that there should be a completely separate criminal act.
Yeah, separate act. Anybody who, you know, intentionally, knowingly, or recklessly sells or permits people to drink alcohol under 21 on the premise shall be guilty of misdemeanor. And then that way you don't have to deal with the 2,000 because it's limited to 1,000. I would recommend that separate provision and then, and then I would, if you do that and you intend this section to be more of a negligence-type statute, then you may want to consider that, back to the first page, any person 21 years or older who negligently and then leave everything else and then you could take out knowing who knows of, because I think you're trying to reach the folks who are negligent, because you have sort of a higher ciento or mens rea when you say who knows of alcohol consumption, just to make it consistent to make, because it looks like you're doing a dram shop type statute here.
We did try to take it from Massachusetts.
Okay.
The cut and paste is not doing very well, so.
So I just wanted to point that out for consistency, otherwise, you know, as you know from the lawsuits, they'll point out, keep it consistent that way. And so those are just the, and that's the technical input I wanted to provide to the legislature so that they can just sort of tighten that up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sidesy Massey.
Thank you. Actually, we're, I'm here in support of the bill. So, you know, for us, after carefully reviewing Bills 368, 31, as the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse stand to support this bill, the department continues to educate the community on the importance of prevention and education of substance abuse and addiction on the island. So the bill will promote, you know, continued efforts on prevention and education by holding the community accountable to our youth. And that's the one thing that I really agree with Senator Cruz on. So for us, business owners, community members, parents, relatives, we'll be more vigilant of our youth today so we can protect our future. The department and Sanctuary's partnership will be supported through this bill. As you know, Sanctuary is one of our non-government organizations and it will help to decrease the incidence of youth turning to alcohol and receiving treatment. And it will also decrease the recidivism rates of youth in treatment and decrease the sales of alcohol to our minors, which is what we strive for. The bill will also support the partnership that we have with the Superior Court of Guam right now, with the DWI Court, in its endeavors by decreasing the incidence of DUI among our young drivers today. So with that too, we also, it'll also enhance our current prevention programs such as the Youth for Youth Lifelong, which I am an adult advisor for, and our One Nation Campaign for Underage Drinking. So for us, on behalf of the Department of Mental Health, we thank you for the opportunity to support our efforts in treatment and prevention in our community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tonyis. Senator Cruz? Senator Amy Meschino?
Thank you one more time, Speaker Ben. I certainly stand in support of anything that would assure that our families are healthy and safe. My dilemma, Chief Deputy AG, is this. I, when we start talking about what a family can do inside their own homes, I struggle with that. This means that if a parent decides that my 19-year-old is going to have some wine with me during our dinner, then I can be charged with a misdemeanor. Is that what this means?
Yes.
And so, for me, I just, you know, there are families who are really irresponsible, but there are some families who are very responsible. And the way I teach my son to drink responsibly is he can have a glass of wine with me. And I just, you know, so I struggle with that. I also struggle with the idea that certainly we do want to teach our youth and I think that the laws can help limit, but I also say all the time that more and more it's the adults that are the problem. They're the ones with DUIs and they're the ones who are being really irresponsible. And so I see this measure as helping the adults be more responsible with the young ones, but I wonder what are we really doing for our older, the older spectrum ones? And don't get me wrong, I appreciate all your work in mental health. You certainly are doing a good job of getting the awareness out there and the Vice Speaker was absolutely correct and we had the close-up folks here, that was at the top of their list, was the drinking. And then I just wonder.
Well, there is, there could be a compromise if, as I, and I believe the author is willing to separate out the criminal sanction portions of it and perhaps if we wanted to make it a criminal law and put it in Title 9, or not Title, yeah, Title 9, because this is not necessarily operating for people, Title 9, then you can create exceptions or exemptions for, like for religious purposes and, you know, there are those, or again, you could craft the, you could craft the criminal side of it to be more of a, and who knows, or who intentionally, knowingly gave it to them and caused intoxication, you know, so.
So that would teach responsible consumption.
That could be, but that's something for you folks to hash out policy-wise, but, so that's all the input I can give insofar as if we put it in terms of being, you know, the criminal side of it and then that allows for some prosecutorial discretion, so. But in terms of the negligence issue, the negligence issue here is tied to when you cause injuries is here and so those folks from a policy viewpoint should be held liable.
Okay. And then the other, the other comment I, or issue I raise is the law enforcement. So this would mean if we're at a fiesta, our Fandango, and it's in the backyard, someone's yard, and we are allowing the kids under 21 to open the can of beer, then if a police officer is there, then we can cite that family, right?
Right.
Right, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Meschino. Senator Adafilthi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question. How would this be able to, for the WAG, how would this be able to divide the liability? I mean, if a minor went to two different clubs and drank equally at both clubs or, I mean, how would you determine who would be held liable? Would it be Club A or Club B?
It would be the jury or the judge who would determine the liability and without going into our system, you know, where we do the comparative liability, you know, instructions to the jury as to how to, as how to apportion it to the parties who are named, because sometimes also, and this isn't the civil personal injury side of it, there's also assumption of risk that, you know, of course the defendants will say, well, you know, more than 50% was caused by the individual, but again, that's, that is a factual jury determination based on the evidence that's presented.
So it works itself out, you know, works itself out. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Adafilthi. Senator Tom.
I do support this bill, but I'm just wondering, in the meantime, while we're working on in the introduction of this and the passage of it, is there anything that would hold an establishment accountable? Let's say a minor goes in there, orders a beer, wouldn't there be some sort of law already in effect that says contributing to the delinquency of a minor?
Well, we do have, although I wish they would title that and we're trying to change that, by the way. For some reason Guam's contributing to the delinquency of a minor charge is called jurisdiction over adult. Don't ask me how that came to be, but it's a misnomer. Yeah, that's a statute I suppose you could try to apply to commercial owners, that the difficulty from a criminal standpoint, of course, you know, is the burden and proof is high and quite frankly, not all owners are on the premises, so, and they're owned by corporations and I can go on and go on about why we lawyers are clever at protecting our clients.
So then it would be up to the, who would get charged? Who would face any sort of penalties if a minor is allowed to drink? The minor? What would they?
The adult that we can prove actually gave it to them.
So perhaps the bartender then?
Yeah, but if the bartender, again, it depends on the evidence. If I, if you're in there, I have to assume that you were of proper age and were carded or whatever. So how could I charge you criminally? You're the bartender, how would you know that I'm under 21?
And with this day age?
Because it's not my job, I'm being practical.
It's a whole lot easier nowadays for people to make a fake ID and present.
Well, I mean, there's all of that, yeah, but I mean ordinarily, if you were behind the bar and someone comes up and usually you assume that they, that they were 21, right?
I've addressed that indeed.
Yeah.
On 3419. 3419 is, as it relates to, if a person asks for an ID and is presented with an ID, he can use as a defense the fact that the ID looked valid and he presented it. But more of the intent of this bill was not so much a dram act for the bars as much as my concern for getting those of us in the community. Budweiser is not cultural, nor is Miller. So anybody that believes that it's okay for them to be popping cans of beer in the backyard is culturally incorrect. And when I was judge and I had kids that came in front of me, I would tell them, if an old man without legs or hands asked you to go get a can of beer, you find your mother, your father, or an adult and say, Uncle Ken wants a can of beer, I cannot carry it across the yard to him. And gone are the days of sending our six-year-old down to the corner store to buy the six-pack. And if people think that's responsibility, I fear for our future generations. But this is more for the families and if you're going to let them drink at home, then lock them in the room and lock the keys. Don't have them out driving.
Thank you for that and it's a good point to be made because there are a lot of parents out there who allow their children, you know, to go to the bars and establishments and while they won't get served alcohol there, what they'll do is they'll drink up at home and then head out to the bars and then go out on the town, which makes the community unsafe and these kids unsafe. So I do applaud the author for this bill and I do support it entirely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other additional comments? If not, we will conclude this portion of the public hearing for the presentation of the testimony before the committee. We will continue to receive any interested individuals who may wish to present additional testimony, to submit them to our office or to hear at the legislature and will then append it to the record of this official proceedings. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and dismiss the panel and we'll proceed with the next bill on the agenda. Would you indulge the Speaker a little bit? All right. We will then proceed with Bill number 399 and see if there's any individuals that are here this morning to present public testimony. Bill number 399 is an act to repeal Section 2 of Public Law 2610 and to amend Section, excuse me, 8134A of Article 1, Chapter 8, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, relative to minor or dependent children, survivor, and release. Very briefly, I authored this bill in response to situations that were developing with regards to children whose parents passed away after turning 18 and were still enrolled in higher education. If the child was 18 and attending high school and the parent passes away, they would be eligible for survivor annuity. If the child is over 18, enrolled in a higher education, and the parent passes away, then they become ineligible for the survivor annuity. And there was some opinion rendered by the Retirement Fund, which then disqualified these individuals from receiving the survivor annuity that would have normally been entitled to them. And so the bill was introduced to correct that situation. We did send invitations and we did receive some communication from the Retirement Fund, who indicated that they are preparing written testimony, they're having a board meeting to approve the testimony to be submitted and we will await that submission of testimony. We don't have anyone sign up this morning, but for the purposes of conducting a public hearing, the Bill 399 will have been considered publicly heard and the record will remain open to accept any additional testimony that may come between now and the time that the committee report is filed. Okay. We will then go ahead and proceed with the Bill for 373, I believe, 372 and 73. 372 is an act to add a new section 22437 to Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new 1631 to Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the expansion and renovation of the facilities of the University of Guam. And a companion bill, 373, would propose the same program for the facilities of the Guam Community College. President O'Connell is here early, would like to go ahead and ask her to please join us and of course, we have the President of the University of Guam, Dr. Robert Underwood And my apologies, Dr. Mary O'Connell is also here to join us this morning and we'll go ahead and receive testimony, the appropriate bills, by the individuals represented. Dr. Underwood?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Goodness, I'm Robert Underwood, President of the University of Guam, and I'm here in support of Bill 37231 and I thank you for the opportunity to make these comments. The university is today, this year, celebrating the Transpirit for our 60th anniversary this year and this bill provides an opportunity, a timely opportunity, to double our capability when joined with our five-year capital fundraising campaign to support the financing of facility priorities as identified in our updated fiscal master plan. As many of you know, we are on an aggressive schedule to try to raise $30 million by the year 2017. This bill provides legislation that allows support for higher education to. This bill provides legislation that allows support for higher education to increase as our economy improves. It also requires a commitment by the University of Guam to match every extra dollar provided through this legislation with a dollar the university generates through its own fundraising efforts. I support this passage as one of the two pillars to enable the university to build a twenty-first century campus that will meet our growth needs until twenty twenty-five. The University of Guam's fiscal master plan to be completed in April of this year will likely include over one hundred million dollars worth of capital projects and will include new buildings, infrastructure upgrades and revisions, and will be adaptable to both an on-campus and off-campus student and faculty degree programs, research projects and an expanding service network. This will allow the university to build and plan an infrastructure in response to the island's growth needs and not just to the availability of existing resources, funding resources. The plan will guide construction of our fiscal master plan in keeping with our students' and academic programs and the forefront of our efforts on the broader scope of economic and human resource development and professional capacity building as our overarching commitment to this community. The bill offers a unique opportunity to develop the financial capacity to meet the growth needs of our university's student population. The university's academic programs have received recognition from specialized accreditation bodies and community confidence as the university continues to grow, as reflected in our most recent fall twenty-eleven enrollment numbers, which increased to three thousand seven hundred and twenty-one, the highest level in ten years. Our current facilities must expand to meet the increased demand and to create learning environments that are conducive to student success research and service outreach activities. The campus of the future will include LEED certification for all new facilities. This year, we plan to break ground on the Student Services Center and Engineering School Annex in the near future. The achievement is due to significant part to the legislature's leadership and the passing of Bill four four six thirty, now Public Law thirty dash twenty, that allows for debt service for these projects tied to a USDA loan, which is pending approval. The Student Services Center will provide a single one-stop center for all UOG student services and will be the center point of student life on campus. Unfunded priority projects include, but are not limited to, the expansion of the Fine Arts Center, which will enhance our capacity to showcase the many talents of our students, faculty and programs, and the Triton Engagement Center, which will consolidate the many services and outreach activities in disabilities, cancer research and distance education. Other projects include renovations and expansions for nursing, health science and science programs, Micronesian Area Research Center, Marine Lab and Water Environmental Research Programs, and better technology support to students and faculty throughout the campus. I'm in the thirty-one, I'm a student of Guam and support to help foster a nurturing environment so that the university can continue to provide the leadership and talent that sustains our Western Pacific region, is priceless and an investment that continues to reap dividends for individuals and our community as a whole. In nineteen fifty-one, Jose Palomo had the bold idea of establishing a teacher training college on island with a curriculum that was on par with US mainland colleges. Island leaders approved his proposal. Territorial College of Guam was established just one year later. Jose Palomo was a man of incredible foresight who was determined to improve the lives of Guamanians throughout, through higher education. Your actions to approve Bill three seven two thirty-one demonstrate your foresight and determination to shape the next sixty years of higher education on Guam for the betterment of our island and our region's future. And I'd be happy to answer any questions and, you know, I, I fully recognize that maybe the bill may need some changes or fixes as we go along this process. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Dr. Underwood. Just one, one quick question. The limitation on expenditure of the funds requires that the University of Guam matched any, any dollar, on a dollar-for-dollar basis. Is that something that the University of Guam fully supports?
Yes.
Very much. Thank you very much. Mr. Vice Speaker? Senator Yamashita?
Thank you very much, Speaker Ben. President Underwood, welcome. Thank you for being here this morning. I appreciate your, your radio ads. Twenty-eight years ago, you stopped smoking. Every time, every time I'm going somewhere, I hear it, so.
I haven't stopped drinking beer, no. I'm sorry.
No. No. I'm working at not laughing the way I usually laugh. Doing really well, I think. Mr. President, I, I appreciate your support of this. I certainly appreciate your leadership at the University of Guam. I, I agree with you that education really will help us with, with our future and ensuring that everyone is healthy and, and that we move forward and that we realize our potential and it's open to everybody and I appreciate that. It's a public institution where everybody is welcome and we help them realize potential. You and I have met months ago about a particular issue and I'm hoping that as we go along, we would see fit to somehow fit into our master plan, the development and return of an early childhood center, where we can research, model, train families, how to best take care of. You know, we, we proffer a lot of bills that are intervention, prevention, but more intervention. We just talked about a bill that would help, help address alcohol. I suggest that if we did a better job at growing families' choices, will be better made as we go along. And we once upon a time had early childhood centers at the University of Guam that addressed infant toddlers and preschool. And a president years ago decided that it costs too much. And GCC did the same thing. They decided it costs too much. And I say this all the time, that the investment in early childhood really is, is a good investment. For every dollar you invest, you get a return of eight dollars. We would be wise to do it the right way from birth. Some will argue it's even before birth, but I'll settle for birth right now. And right now, a lot of our social issues really are, how are we raising our children? To be responsible, to be caring, to be.
Senator? Yeah, if I may.
Well, because if we're talking about in, in supporting, if we're talking about supporting the University of Guam, I'd like to know that the University of Guam is going to further support family development and we're going to, we're going to give them another six million dollars. And I'll stop, but that, that is, that is my message, is we're going to give more taxpayer money.
I don't mind that discussion to occur, but I know, you know, if we could stick to the bill first.
That is the bill.
No, it's, it's for capital projects.
Right, and, and the Early Childhood Center is a capital project because it's been turned into something else. So that's, that's my thought. Thank you very much, Speaker Ben.
Okay, thank you very much. Senator? Senator? I just wanted to get to President Okada and then we'll, I'll, I'll come back and see if there's any additional comments on that issue. President Okada? On three seventy-three.
Yes, my name is Mary Okada, President of the Guam Community College, and I'm here to provide testimony in support of Bill number three seventy-three dash thirty-one. Senators, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to be here before you to offer support for Bill number three seventy-three. An act to add a new Section two-two-four-three-eight to Title Five Guam Code Annotated, relative to the expansion and renovation of the facilities of the Guam Community College. For the past several years, the Guam Community College has been expanding its facilities. Although many of you may have participated in several groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings of the college, the inspe, the expansion and renovation of our facilities is far from over. In two thousand and five, the college adopted the fiscal master plan that projected the college's growth over the next fifteen years. Keeping on task with the new buildings recommended in that master plan, the college added the Anthony A. Leon Guerrero Health Center in two thousand nine, the Learning Resource Center in two thousand ten, and the Student Center in two thousand eleven. In two thousand and twelve, the college will open the completely renovated Foundation Building in July. With each of these added facilities, the college incorporated new features into its designs. For example, the Learning Resource Center was designed to obtain LEED certification and we successfully achieved a gold rating in LEED certification. This bit, building utilized digital controls for air conditioning and LED lighting. The renovated Foundation Building will incorporate a rain harvesting system that will capture water that will be used to flush the toilets. By the end of this year, two thousand and twelve, the college will have four buildings with photovoltaic systems. The parking lots have already been retrofitted with photovoltaic systems with funding provided by the Guam Energy Office. Funding has also been provided for both of these, for both designs. The Guam Community College Foundation and the Department of Interior provided, and built, built, the body in Public Law thirty dash two oh one provided construction funding for Building two hundred and the expansion of the forensic crime lab. These buildings are being designed to obtain LEED certification as well. New features are being explored to incorporate into these facilities, such as a building automation system. This system is computerized with a network of electronic devices that are designed to monitor and control the mechanical and lighting systems in a building. So what, so with all that we have been able to accomplish, why is all of this necessary? For the past several years, increase, enrollment has increased by thirty-eight percent. Many new programs have been revamped, reinstated or reinstated or currently under development. There are emerging technologies that the community will begin to require, such as photovoltaic training, among others. According to this bill and its current, current fund, fund, funding will be used for the expansion or renovation of the facilities of the Guam Community College. I would like for you to consider language that allows the college to increase its capacity by expanding its informational technologies. The college recently completed a technology audit. This audit updated our enterprise architecture and information technology strategic plan. This audit identifies some areas that need to be upgraded to allow the college to further venture into online or distance ed and increase our capacity to offer online courses. This will definitely increase our enrollment and provide opportunities to more students, particularly non-traditional students, not just on Guam, but in, throughout the region. Senators, you know that GCC is one of the most fiscally responsible agencies of the government. For the last ten consecutive years, the college has been able to maintain clean financial audits. We've been very fortunate for dedicated staff that ensures our fiscally, that we are fiscally accountable. Every investment in the Guam Community College has proven to be a wise one. We account for all the funds that are given to us and our planning process has provided us with excellent, excellent opportunities in the past several years. Sadis Massey for the opportunity to provide this testimony and for your continued support of the Guam Community College. We are excited about the opportunities to renovate and expand our facilities. Your commitment and investment in our institution is greatly appreciated by our faculty, board, staff, and most importantly, our students and their families. Thank you very much. And I'm available now to answer any question.
Thank you very much, Sadis Massey, Madam President. I'm going to ask the same question I asked President Underwood with regards to the restriction on the expenditure of the funds to be matched by money raised by GCC. Is there, is that fully supported by the Guam Community College?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Vice Speaker? Okay. Senator Yamashita? All right, thank you. Senator, Senator Martin?
Not really a question, but just a comment in general. I'm so proud of, of where the university and GCC have gone and have, have come. I'm a student of, I'm a Triton and a proud Triton. And looking back twenty years ago when I was in college, I was in modular homes, going through, going to my classes there. I think there was an A and B building and the science building. And, and just seeing the plans and what's in store for the university is so exciting. It's almost bittersweet because I know at some point it'll be a campus that is unrecognizable and I think the same is going to be true for the Guam Community College. And it's so exciting to know that the opportunities that are being made available for, for our students now, it's just, it's amazing and awe-inspiring and I'm just so proud of the accomplishments of both the University of Guam and Guam Community College. So I thank you for your tenacity and for continuing to push for, for, for what you have in store. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sadis Massey. I just want to say that I'm a Triton also. And about twenty years ago. Yes. And about twenty years ago, when I first got into this legislature, I saw those modular buildings and I said, we got to do something about this. And one of the first things I did as a member of this body about eighteen years ago was work with the University of Guam where we structured the first bond issue that ever was to fund schools for not only the Department of Education, but the University of Guam. We worked with the University of Guam. We were able to structure the bond financing, which for the first time paid for our own local institutions. Before then, we had to wait for the largest, the federal government. And twenty years ago, when I said, no more of those buildings, we were able to do that. Every new building that has been built since then, except for the most, you know, for some of the recent renovations, was because of that bond issue that we helped. And this body has structured to assist the University of Guam and of course, we continue to try and, and provide the resources to GCC. And so that makes me a proud Triton also. Very much. Senator Cruz?
You know, I, my concern is, following up on, on Senator Yamashita's. I did note it, did note on your curriculum, I mean, on your class listing, because I did go to both, both websites to, to see what was being taught this, this coming year. I, I saw it had at least a dozen early childhood classes. At least. So, but putting on my tourism hat, I didn't see a Russian class yet.
Not yet.
Either, either school, so.
There, we have, I've, I've had a couple of conversations this week. There are twenty-five Russian speakers on the island. There are approximately twenty-five Russian speakers on the island. We're trying to find one with a degree that, that hopefully, that, so. So in fact, we, we've had those conversations with the Dean of the College of the Arts and Social Sciences. And, and, and absent that, we might just go ahead and certify one through the continuing ed through our PIP program. And it'll be, you know, not necessarily for a regular college credit, but something that just get people start thinking about it.
Has either institution done a follow-up to try to figure out what happens with your, with your graduates? I mean, does you, do you have an alumni office that, that records where everybody goes? I, because I note that both of you have Japanese speakers, I mean, Japanese courses. But it never ceases to amaze me the number of times that I, Department of Labor is announcing for a Japanese speaker for, and, and it's not for CEO. It's for the, the major D at the Sheraton Japanese restaurant. And forty years and we still haven't. I'm a little concerned about how old I'm going to be before we have a Russian-speaking graduate from the university. And we've been, I testified at Congress three years ago for the China-Russian waiver, but we've not prepared for the eventuality if we actually thought it was going to happen. I, I was pleasantly surprised that it did happen. But I really do think that we've got to, we've got to start planning forward of the types of people that, that we want. And more importantly, for your institution, with all of the awards that you get in Culinary Arts, I was shocked to see that yesterday morning, we're still getting ads for, anyway.
I'm, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll, I'll be happy to host the roundtable on all of these issues.
I'd like to respond.
Yes.
To Senator Cruz and Senator Yamashita's. There is a requirement for our Perkins funding that we do a postgraduate follow-up survey. And so usually it happens a year after they've exited a particular program. And so we're starting to gather that information now. It's becoming more apparent that federal funding is tied to placement. So we're starting to increase the capacities and the information that we collect from students through our alumni database. In response to your question on early childhood, we just received the initial, the first draft of our physical campus master plan. And it has been presented to administrators and staff. It was presented right before the Christmas holidays. We do have a briefing for faculty and members of our board on January twentieth at four o'clock. In that master plan, there is, because of the enrollment figures for the different programs, there are buildings that have been designated for specific programs. And so in the building renovation for Building two hundred, which is currently where the bond will fund for that renovation and construction, that will eventually become the education building. And so those, those additional, or that additional information is now being incorporated into our campus master plan. We're just starting to get feedback from, you know, the faculty, the staff, the administrators, the board. And so if you would like to attend or listen in on our presentation by our architects, you're more than welcome to come and we, we will address those issues. Because the question. Because the questions that are coming up are all being, you know, reconciled and, and brought back to before we issue the final report.
Yes.
So, are you actually looking at building an early learning center?
Not necessarily. That was not part of what was incorporated, but we still have yet to, because we're doing the renovation now for specific classrooms, but that has not been brought to the table as far as, you know, a, a learning center.
I, I thank you that, for that, Dr. Okada. I just really believe an early learning center where all the diversities are observed and we're training for them and we're acknowledging them and we're doing our own research, we could be the place where the whole world's going to come to get it and to understand, to celebrate the diversity. And I just think that's a key piece missing from both of our institutions.
Yeah, but one of the things, I mean, in reading this bill and how it was, one of the thoughts I had was, could we enter into a partnership with maybe facilities that are not necessarily under our purview, but in partnership with another organization? But I didn't have, you know, I didn't, wasn't sure how it was going to work, which is why I did not include it. But if we entered into a long-term partnership with an organization that helped build the capacity using separate facilities that were not ours, this does not allow us to do that because this says renovation of the GCC facilities. And so, if that's an opportunity or if there's some language that kind of, that could somehow expand it to, to something to include that, that will allow us greater opportunities. For example, if the college were to enter into a long-term partnership with Department of Education, for example, and there was going to be designated buildings that GCC can use during the day and in the evening, then that would give, this would give us an opportunity to expand in those areas, offer courses in those areas, you know, for, for different regions or different components. But it would be under our renovation funds and our, you know, it would allow us to do something with external facilities outside of our main campus.
Thank you very much. When was that briefing again? Just in case.
January 20th at 4 o'clock.
January 20th?
Yes.
4 p.m. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Attorney General, did you have any comments on these? Okay. Well, can you come forward? Because I have a question for something else because I remembered something. Yes.
I don't teach you for hanging around.
I just, I, I just wanted to, uh, see, because I, I remember receiving an email from Anita Mignolnia. And this was on, we'll go back to Bill 406.
Oh, 406.
Yes. No, no. On Bill 406, and, and Ms. Mignolnia, in the short email, had indicated that Bill 406 violates the bond covenant. Bill 406 violates the 2011 Government of Guam Business Privilege Tax Bond Issued in December, Bonds Issued in December 2011. And you presented testimony, but you did not present it...
In that context.
In that context. Is that something that...
Because I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I would have to probably, uh, like, I would go back and ask whether this would have the impact on that because, uh... Yeah, I, I don't think it does, but I, I don't, I can't answer that with certainty only because, uh, why wouldn't that apply for the, uh, the Cortec Amendment? So, I, I don't know. I know that was going to be your follow-up, so.
No, that is my follow-up.
No, I, I know that was going to be your follow-up.
Because, you know, if...
I didn't get out of the building soon enough, so.
If this is, if this is a violation, in their opinion, the administration's opinion, then why isn't the additional five years of lease payments to the Cortec for the offset on GRT a violation of that bond covenant?
Right. I, I stand by my, my first answer, which was, two answers. One, I, I tried to get out of the building before you could ask that question. And, and secondly, I don't think so, especially we're only looking at here at max 300, 400,000 versus the, um, the, uh...
20 million.
Well, I, I don't know how long.
Whoa, five times four.
I know it's millions.
25. Five times 4.9.
So, oh, no, I think for the first, in, in any event, I think annually, I think it only impacts either between 4 to 8 million, I think.
4.9 million.
4.9, yeah.
Right, but then it's a five-year extension, right.
But I meant annually, the, the impact. Because remember, the bondholders have first...
Yes, I understand. That's, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, so, but I don't know that exact, so to answer your question is, I don't think so, but I can't answer with certainty whether we've reached that num, mathematically, I don't, I don't see how. But maybe we, maybe they, they have information that I don't know.
Well, could you then? Because the Attorney General approved to...
You're right. So, what, so, when did you get the email?
This morning.
Okay.
So, can we get something from the AG on the Cortec extension that says it does not violate the bond covenant?
Well, when we do our reviews, we would have signed off that, we wouldn't have. But I'll, I'll...
So, can we get that information just so that we know the basis? So that we can actually give guidance to the rest of the body for any future bills?
Yeah, especially as they keep using the business privilege tax